Secondmore City Council, here's your agenda for tonight. They're voting on HB 410 or 140, I'm not sure what that is. But we'll find out, and that's what it is. I would say it's gonna be a brief meeting, but any time I say it's a brief meeting, we're here for four hours. So, maybe it'll be a four-hour meeting. So, if I say four hours, it's gonna be at home at one o'clock.
I never already worked on that. And I didn't do anything about it. That really didn't matter. My dad did.
Nope, he didn't.
Exactly.
My leg got stuck.
I did. It said it takes a year, it's been a year.
I put eight cameras off.
No, I said everything.
That's the quantity.
Yeah, no, it's one, one service.
That's the one I got to find, all of you. They don't apply.
It's just a revolution.
They don't apply.
What do you mean they don't apply?
There's an error on the one by the letter.
But is that, that don't apply? But we have this. Why am I don't find that?
Because you voted for it.
And then we know it voted, voted.
It is, it is in fact voted, but we do have to keep record. We did in fact vote on, in such a vote.
Now, with that in mind.
And it had been rendered moot.
If it moved, it's by our state.
No, you still got to have it in the record.
We voted for that too. I, I briefly, I was at that night.
Yeah, but this, the nine had been rendered moot, but we did not sign it when we voted on it, and should have. We're just cleaning up paperwork, in my opinion. You okay? You look at me like I'm the devil or something, when you're walking up on me. Counselor, I'm walking up on you. What?
And, I don't know how to get a food bar.
Huh?
A meat bar.
Republicans every now and then makes meat bar cookies. Have to stay away from them. They are extra delicious.
I'll tell you a true thing. Republicans, remember when there's Big Leagues there? They're a baker.
I remember when Winn-Dixie was there.
Okay. Winn-Dixie. But, so, they made, on chocolate chip cookie? That was exactly where my mother was.
Well, actually, actually, it was down in the, the grocery store, down in the bottom of the cookie max.
And you noticed the cash register already closed? That didn't last long.
People don't, people don't sell.
I talked about public, did you mention?
Oh, yeah.
People don't sell a lot, I mean, they don't.
Yeah, Big Lots, Big Lots is going out too, and my dad don't want to buy them by that.
Well, Big Lots is going out all over the country.
Which I'm glad, that's gonna save me a little money, because she loves going there.
So I put gas in the car.
That ain't on tape, dude. My wife might.
Well, it's not loud.
I mean, uh, she's, she got into making some stuff, and then before she went back to work.
I think, Counselor, you know, I wanted to be on the speaker.
I did not start anything, anything, without.
Was that?
Actually, not started anything, as soon as I put what I said on there.
Good evening, Counselor.
Coke and cooties?
You, uh, want to be on speaker, do you say?
Who's that one for you?
I was fixing to put you on speaker, because we got two minutes for the start time. And then you'll be able to hear anything goes on, so. All right. Now, can you hear me? Okay, good, all right, I'm standing phone up here. All right, that ain't blocking speaker part, is it?
I can hear you both.
Okay, all right. But we are, uh, a little less than two minutes from waiting to start.
Oh, that was easy, I thought somebody called.
Yes, sir.
I wanted you to say to start with, don't you?
What's that?
No.
I know.
I got a question or three.
Be on tape.
I was talking about Ben Reed.
We just about there, folks, y'all hang tight just one minute. Hey, Sean, my paper recorder ain't working either. Okay. All right. Y'all would, let's call this meeting order. Out of two here, please, in prayer, uh, I bet leave us some word of prayer for.
Lord, we thank you again for the privilege of being in the city of Secondmore. Now, we ask that you would guide us and direct us as we do the city's business, that all that is done is only decently, decently and in order, were approvable to you. In Jesus' name we ask, amen.
Just like you please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amen. Out of three, discuss and vote to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I am not happy with the way item five is worded, we are not voting on HB 140, we're voting on actions relative to HB 140.
We put it there, I, I had her put that there, as of just in case something needed to be.
Not my point, my point is, it, the way it's written, we're voting on HB 140, and we're not. We don't have the authority to vote on HB 140.
Well, I know that, I know that.
I would like to amend that and say, discuss and vote on issues relative to HB 140.
Okay, so, so noted.
Other than that, move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. All in favor? Okay. I'm for discussing, vote to approve minutes.
Move to vote, move to approve all three sets of minutes as stated?
Second. All in favor? Okay, so carry. All right, item five, discuss and vote on issues relative, uh, to House Bill 140. And I'm gonna turn the floor over to our Counselor, who can tell you a lot more about this than I can.
So, House Bill 140 is a cap that is a bill that introduces places a cap of ten percent of the city's budget. It limits the amount of fines and forfeitures that can go towards the city's budget at ten percent. Anything over ten percent, S.G.'s back to the state. The bill currently passed out of committee yesterday, Governmental Affairs Committee. I believe it's got at least one more committee to go to, I think. And if it makes it out of that committee, then it goes to both chambers for debate, and probably an amendment, I don't know if it's passed in its current state. Uh, there were some concerns about how it would affect small cities. The, the thinking behind it is that these small towns will continue to enforce the traffic law, traffic laws, specifically speeding, and, um, continue to write citations, but then send, uh, the, anything over ten percent to the state. I don't know how that's going to happen if these cities don't have a police force, um, but it's, the mayor and I talked about it, it's my concern that this is going to have a detrimental effect to small towns, and we will have to raise taxes. And the sponsor of the bill yesterday actually said in the committee meeting, when asked about how these cities can make that difference up, he said they can raise taxes, they can implement a sales tax, they can cut their budget. So, it doesn't look like small towns in Georgia have very much representation, at least in this committee, but that's where everything stands right now. I'm watching it, I've been in contact with GMA. It looks like the bill was amended in the committee yesterday to take out sheriff's departments. So, it's still applicable to municipalities, um, but it does not distinguish between, um, municipalities on interstates, or municipalities on two-lane or four-lane highways, or six-lane highways for that matter. It's all municipalities. So that's, that's the status of bill, House Bill 140, right now.
But deep under belief by property.
It is, it is going to have an adverse effect on law enforcement, it is an anti-law enforcement. If you look at the statistics, speeding is the number-one crime in Georgia. It is a misdemeanor, so therefore it's a crime. It is the number-one cited crime in the state of Georgia, by far, second place isn't close, Chief can tell you that.
Highest cause of fatalities?
Uh, it, speed is the highest cause of highway fatalities. It is, in ten years ago, I would see two, maybe three triple-digit speeds a year on segment five. I see that in a week now, easily. It used to shock the conscience, now it just, it's a run-of-the-mill occurrence. And when I say triple digits, I'm not talking about a flat one-hundred, Chief can tell you, we've had one thirteen, one seventeen, we've had a one forty here. And so, uh, in that, it's egregious, but, uh, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, but it deepens the police department in small towns.
Exactly.
To the point where you got to get rid of police in small towns.
Exactly.
Yeah, because they're taking ninety percent of the money and just giving small towns ten percent of the money.
Which brings up a very interesting point. The name of this bill is No Taxation by Citation Act. So, the state says, anything over ten percent, the state is going to confiscate it. So, the state is going to tax tickets over ten percent of municipal budgets. Moreover, there is a statute concerning speed traps, that the state legislature is empowered to enforce. This is not enforcing it. They mentioned in the debate yesterday, that there are thirty-seven cities affected by this, one has lost its speed certification.
Right.
So the other thirty-six are gonna pay the price. Ladies and gentlemen, I tell you for the record, superspeeders will increase, unlicensed, unregistered, uninsured drivers will increase, human trafficking will increase, drug trafficking will increase, illegal guns will increase, and fatalities on Georgia's highways will increase. And it is the legislature that will do it.
And at the same time, the police department will decrease, but we got the funds to pay them. Indeed.
So what can we do? What can we do, write out?
Get on the phone, get on the phone, don't work, don't waste your time with the letter, if they won't get it.
Yep.
Get on the phone with your legislators, NGOs team, is our representative, Carden Summers is our state senator, call them, call the other ones, I've been working the phones the last few days, trying to. It's not about revenue, it's about common sense.
Yeah.
Enforcement of the law. Chief has a policy, he does not have his guy stop somebody on the interstate unless they're doing ninety miles an hour over the speed limit, or ninety in a seventy, twenty over the speed limit. I think everybody here would agree, ninety in a seventy is too fast. But this bill would absolutely destroy thirty-seven or more small towns in Georgia. Interestingly enough, I had a conversation with someone who did an investigative story out of Atlanta yesterday, in, in the city of Asheville, about ticket that he got. And he, and I told him the reporter, and I said, you didn't tell the other side of the story. You made out like this citation, he paid a eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine-dollar citation, and all we sit, number one gentleman was cited for ninety-seven in a seventy.
Twenty-seven miles over the speed limit.
Twenty-five over the speed limit. And out of that eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars, the state got about thirty-eight, forty percent of that. So all of it didn't go to Asheville. But I told him, I said, this new bill as amended, has removed the counties, I said, why is it that some counties, including the one we're sitting in right now, the department can have a budget of two million dollars, but it brings in twice that in revenue? We have a local sheriff who, that Baker reported on it, asked the county commissioners, give me a hundred-and-eighty thousand, I'll bring you back eight-hundred thousand more in revenue. But that's being looked away from, and it's being targeted towards these cities. And it's almost saying, you know, counties, when y'all do it, it's for public safety, but cities, when you do it, it's for profit. And it's, it's the furthest thing from the truth. Why can't Chief Reed and his guys protect the citizens of this town?
A question for you. In the event this passes, which I think is at least double, I think is at least fifty-fifty, can these thirty-six communities form a class and sue the legislature?
They're a union.
Huh?
Legislative, legislature is a union. When the legislature passes bills, it writes the unity, calls them in, so it can't be sued.
I would recommend you call everybody you know. And tell them to call the representatives every day. Not once, every single day.
There's, there's a common sense solution to this. If you, if you're worried about the bad actors going out there and policing for profit, fine. Just make it where they cannot make a speeding case less than twenty miles over posted speed limit. If it's fifty-five, that person's gotta be doing seventy-five or more.
I would say there's a problem with that, which is, you're making a de facto speed limit of ninety miles an hour.
I said they can't make a speeding case, they can still pull you over, they can't make a speeding case out of it. If they're doing, what is it, ten now, they gotta be going ten more for you to stop the stop.
For us to stop, yeah.
They can still make a traffic stop, they just can't issue a citation for that. They can slow it down, say, hey, slow it down for me, they just can't make a speeding case. But Chief, how many times does a speeding stop lead to speeding license, possession of drugs, you got possession of cars?
Many, many, over half, 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 at least half, I mean, it's, you know, and, and going back to what you said about the, I've heard speed trap brought up enough.
I want, I.
The posted speed on seventy-five is seventy, correct?
I want one legislature, and I challenge the guy that is the chairman of this committee, to sit in front of my face and define that term for me.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask, you know, historically speeding, they would drop speeds drastically.
Yep.
On, on people.
Without warning.
Without warning, and, and, but as far as I know, I've not been on a part of seventy-five that's not a posted seventy mile per hour zone.
I'll give you a example.
We're visible for, I know some of our lot are, have shot distances of nine-hundred feet. We've got to be vis- visible at least five-hundred. So, there's no trap there, you know, we're not, we're not making people break the law. And, and, like I said, when you're, when you're riding ninety-one plus.
All right, I'll give you an example of speed trap that we've all encountered. There's a community on Highway eighty-two, and there's a big sweeping curve to the left, and it goes from sixty-five to fifty-five, forty-five, thirty-five, as you go around the curve. And the enforcement branch for that particular community sits at the far side of that curve, and you come around, and you're letting engine torque slow it down, and then it's slowing down fast enough.
But I, I'm talking about the applicability here, you know, where some of the different, it's just, it's not.
There's a detrimental effect in a trickle-down sense as well, because these cities don't have their own jails. They're paying ten percent of the local jail.
Yeah.
That's going to be wiped out. Uh, you guys have, for instance, Secondmore has a nine-one-one contract that was created for the increased dispatch, that's going to be wiped out, you're not gonna need it anymore.
It's all, yeah, he's gonna lose a lot of money too.
All the candidates that have these contracts with him.
What were you trying to say, John?
So, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Because, I think we all agree, this is a bill that we would not like to be passed in person. Uh, I don't think that's even anything up for debate, but the fact is that this bill was created and, uh, it was designed off the bill that passed in Alabama. And it's currently in, in process in Alabama, is what it is. So, do we know how small towns in Alabama who are in the same situation that we are, how and what they've done to, I mean, have they just subjected to, um, the reports that we, that we would have, which would lead to either drastically raise taxes or drastically cut our budget and lose purpose? Do we know how they've handled it?
There's no, there's no data on that, that I know of.
And for the purposes of this conversation, I'm not concerned with Alabama, I'm concerned with Secondmore, Georgia.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just curious if, if this bill was, you know, created off your bill that passed in Alabama, Alabama, which is a state of conservatives,
it is very likely that this same type of bill could pass in the state of Georgia.
This Republican-sponsored bill.
And I'm just curious if we know how those cities have handled it, because.
I, one thing that I like to address, I will agree with what Counselor said a while ago, the bad actors are the ones that's out here, and they're misusing this thing. I agree, you know, do what you may need to do, just like one entity got suspended for six months off the interstate, because that's all they were doing, was interstate. Understand that.
Thank you.
But, besides this bill, less punished are the ones that are the bad actors.
We're sorry to provide a full-on statute.
Yeah, but then, what's the difference, and they're gonna say, taxation by citation, that these so-called thirty-seven cities or whatever are doing, what's the difference in them writing these tickets, and for these people breaking the law? And the money coming in thirty percent, or forty percent, or whatever, goes to the state, but yet, now the state wants to pull that at ten percent. The state, they want you, your department, to keep writing the same amount of tickets you're writing, or whatever, which they can't legally tell you that, you know?
We can't do this to speed.
I wouldn't ever tell you that.
There's no way, there's no way to do the current job that we're doing, because irregardless to how you look at it, it costs money to put fuel in vehicles, it costs money for me to pay officers, it costs money for vehicles, and, and the list goes on.
Yeah.
And there would be no way to continue to provide the service we provide on ten percent, because if I'm not wrong, mistaken, Counselor, uh, that's now gonna include our drug seize, all, all forfeitures, correct?
Well, that was brought up in that subcommittee and again in the committee discussion, and I don't, I've never got a clear answer.
Well, from what I read today.
The bill's written, it says fines and pork.
It does, on the, on, on the second page, the way that I read it, is ten percent of everything. Well, you know, I mean, the dope that we take off the street and those forfeitures really allow us to, and that funds are set aside separately to allow us to better equip our officers, you know? It's taking something bad and turning it into something great, and if that goes away, that's gonna be detrimental to many.
This is essentially eliminated drug fund.
My point is very similar. Is states get that money, and the sheriffs also hand you that money? How have you stopped taxation by citation?
You haven't.
You haven't, that's the question I was.
Exactly.
We, we have no projected outlook on what the state will do with those funds. If they gathered all of those funds together, and then gave us opportunities each year to apply for easier grants and things, and it was dispersed, even help agencies that struggle more than us in, in a small town? I mean, I could, I could understand the reasoning behind that, but.
Fairly and equally.
That, that's what I'm saying, fairly and equally.
And nothing in Atlanta tends to be fairly and equally.
But when they're not, they're not giving us any idea of what those funds will be used for, that scares me.
Okay, one of the representatives out of Clayton County was concerned about the ten percent, and the individual that was giving testimony said, oh, well, your budget is so big, you'll never write enough tickets to increase ten percent. So, they can tell you to write massive numbers of tickets in areas that have large budgets and large tax bases.
Absolutely.
But how many people in this city are on fix-in time, on forty percent?
I think it's probably her.
If you raise taxes here to support the police department.
Yes. I mean, we can, we can sit there and talk all night about how awful this bill would be for us, but we can, not just for us, but for, I would dare say all cities, because even, for example, if they have a huge budget, if they still have, you know, to turn, if they're still capped at ten percent, their budget's still gonna be lowered by a good bit, they're all gonna have to make these decisions on their budget cuts. Can we get a, um, and I know a lot of times, when, when folks pull together, and are urged to call their congressmen and women, can we get a detective script, uh, written out about people who are scared, they don't know what to say, they don't know how to talk with their representatives, they don't know how to ask for what we're urging them to ask for? Is there something that we should do together, uh, a script, and a number down on that floor, and say that we can give out to the people, that they please call your, your representatives? And this is what you can do, but how you can talk to them, is something we can put together for them?
Basically, it's great.
GMA, Georgia Municipal Association, uh, said that this would only affect thirty-seven cities in the state, and I think that number's probably a little low, but.
It'll affect thirty-seven cities on our seventy-five?
Yeah, but it was acknowledged in the subcommittee at least, and the committee yesterday, that this will not have an effect on bigger cities like Atlanta.
Right.
It's, it's, and it's geared toward small towns, it's pretty obvious, more testimony.
But, that being said, our, our folks here, our constituents here, that we are responsible for, if I go and tell my neighbors, we are making, hey, can you call the congressman and ask him? They're gonna be scared, they're not gonna know what to say, how to say it, is there something that we can put together, that we can give them, a postcard, something that we can, a flyer that we can send out, to urge them to call the congressman? Is it something that we're allowed to do as a city, first of all, and do we have the resources in our budget to be able to do something like that and send it out?
If the council votes on it, you can do it.
But, let me ask that same question another, from another direction. Can we publish out the newspapers, and can you know for it?
I'll talk to the editor and see what he says.
Get back to your left.
You have a conversation with your left, how that goes.
We know where that's going.
Basically, as House Bill 140 is meant to penalize the police in small towns, small cities, for enforcing the law, and while at the same time collecting extra money for the state, which does not benefit the small towns. And while at the same time collecting extra money for the state, which does not benefit the small towns. Uh, I think that any, any representative or state senator who backs this is betraying the people of Georgia.
Another element of this too, bear in mind, this is not something that just jumped off. Uh, local enforcement on the interstates really picked up in two thousand and eight because of the economic situation. And it never really went down, but as anybody who has paid property taxes in the last twenty days will attest. Your money's worth less, but your property seems to be worth a whole lot more.
Well, we had a district meeting today, uh, District one is a pretty large district of Chiefs. And, you know, just from talking to a lot of the other chiefs present, it, it, it's not a, it's not an I seventy five thing, it's a rural Georgia thing. Um, once you drop down below here, you really start killing our part of Georgia now.
You're gonna get it between Atlanta and Augusta too.
You know, but I'm, I'm just speaking for, for our district, you know, it, it, it's rural Georgia in a hole that have, you know, been able to squeeze through tight times and you said since two thousand and eight, nothing's come down since two thousand and eight. You know, crime's definitely not come down since two thousand and eight, if, if anything else is escalating. Thank God we have the officers that we have and we're so understaffed now, every agency.
Again, this bill kills people.
It, well, it just, it, it takes a presence off of the street that needs to be there.
I would hope our governor has enough sense not to sign this bill if it happens.
Well, this is a Republican sponsored bill.
It doesn't matter.
He, he, he's a Republican, he knows his side.
I know, I know he's a Republican, I'm a Republican, but I did say against the bill.
Well, I'm a drunkard and I don't like it. Don't publish that then.
And I think you can call them rhinos.
I, I, I think Jennifer's right, we need to get something so that our citizens can realize and know more and understand more about what's actually going on as opposed to just trying to send them to HB one forty and let them try to figure it out. And then, you know, we need, we need to come up with something that is, is good for the city and the people in the city can understand what they're trying to say when they call somebody. Instead of just a duh duh. You know, I mean, we got to be telling the people here in Sycamore. But a lot of them get stayed right when they talking to somebody.
In particular.
Yeah, especially in Atlanta. I mean.
If nothing else, if you look at the types of crimes since the inception of a full-time department here in Sycamore, because I was councilman at that point in time. Um, the types of crime have changed because having the presence here all night has deterred so many things. And I, and I know that it's worked because I've looked in the records at older case files, at the type of crimes, we're not getting called to armed robberies and as many burglaries and, you know, because we're out. We're out here twenty-four hours a day. And, uh, I do not, I don't want the city to lose that, number one.
I don't mean.
I'm a citizen here.
I'm a citizen, love that.
You know, um.
I like seeing his spotlights or whatever at eleven, twelve, one o'clock in the morning go past our house, I, it makes you feel good.
Well, thanks.
And, uh, your city workers here, law enforcement and the city workers, you couldn't ask for better people.
I second that.
I mean, my gosh, they go above and beyond.
Goodly.
Oh, yeah.
Shaw, Shaw ain't got no flow here. Lord mercy. If he has, he's had it since two thousand one, two.
Let's move on, Z, any more discussion y'all wanna say on House Bill one forty?
Only thing I'd say is that I go along with Jennifer.
I, I agree with you and Jennifer on that too.
Yeah, we need to write up.
Want to argue about that.
Even if it's paying the head or whatever.
That's money most things.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, we'll see if we can't get something drafted or, uh, uh, make.
We have, I think we're gonna have to vote approve that.
Okay.
Uh, I, I moved the.
So that we can send something out more constituent to explain House Bill one forty and the actions that they need to take to encourage their representatives to go get into.
Second.
Yeah, we just think.
Okay, we got a motion and we got a second, did y'all hear her motion? Repeat that again.
You better have him to phone.
Motion to draft, uh, contents so that we can explain what citizens have filled with forty and actions that they can take to encourage their representatives to go get into.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor and we got a second. This includes now, let me tell the council before y'all vote. This includes, let's put this in the paper at Citizens' Vents and also mailing these up to the citizens. Okay, all right, all in favor? Unanimous. Good idea, Councilwoman.
Thank you much.
All right.
That's the second test you passed this week.
Y'all be, y'all be praying for her, she's under the weather, but she couldn't be here tonight, she wanted to be here by phone, so.
She passed the COVID too.
I bet.
She riding Corona COVID.
I'm keeping that old camera, okay?
I've got TV, of course, I've got TV, it's all up.
All right, oh, God. We need to come up with an item of censure, Councilman Brian.
What did I do?
Talking about Cody's and the statute.
I didn't say nothing about Cody's, I said cooties.
Don't lie. All right, item six, discuss and vote to approve SYC Melody LLC Beer and Wine Business License Application.
All righty, sir.
What were yours?
Mr. Patel, uh, filled out all the proper applications, uh, we ran a background check, there's nothing been found previously to keep him from acquiring and obtaining an alcoholic beverage license. And so it'd be my request from the council that that be, uh, approved for him.
What's the location on this business?
Right here, it does, uh.
Old Denims One Stop?
Right, twenty-six ninety-five, no, this is twenty-six ninety-five B Cat, right here on the corner.
Yeah.
Oh.
Right by me.
Okay.
I had to look back at my paper.
All right, what's the councilman's?
First, I got to question. Are they simply changing the names on the beer and wine license or are they changing on the shelf?
Uh, this, this guy's fixing to come in.
I don't think he answered the question.
That's changing on.
They're, they're changing, yeah.
Okay, he's.
Or managing.
Gotcha. Uh, he's dotted all his i's and crossed all his t's?
Everything, everything's good.
Move to approve based on established precedent.
All right, we got a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor? Okay, okay, now, go, no. Oh, yeah, one is against, I forgot, yeah, you always are.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, yeah, Fred's against. All right, but it's carried.
All right.
All right.
I might as well just stay up here.
Yeah, get a model.
You might as well because the next one, you too. I'm setting discussing vote to approve. Use, use cameras, I would be watching you while I'm doing it. As a police officer.
So this is just a, this is just a quote, I can give you guys a little bit better detail on what this does for us, what we currently have does, does not work. We've lost some camera heads, um, lost camera heads in places I don't need to lose camera heads. We've never been able to access our current system, it's not compatible with what, uh, was put in. Uh, when we updated all of our electronic tech, I'm, I'm not a computer guy, okay, so my terminal, I may be wrong. So I reached out to Brown McCree and I wanted to find something that would work in conjunction with what he's already installed at our office. And, uh, he gave me a few different options, but this one was to remove everything that's currently in the PD and replace those with new cameras that, that we can view remotely, that, that saves to the hard drives that he installed. Um, so we're not ever in a position, shouldn't be, of losing any footage, um. There are better cameras from what I've viewed, shows a lot better, I will be able from the cameras on the outside to actually see things a lot, a lot better and be able to zoom in, we don't, we're not, we don't have the capability now, just like with a stolen vehicle before. Um, if I could have pulled it up, I could, I could have seen which direction it went the day that it happened and zoom in and we can, you know, if we have a stolen vehicle come through with the target and things like that. See the Dollar General park, our business parking lot a little better. And then over time, um, I don't know how many of you are familiar with flock cameras, um, they're used up and down the interstate and they're used here in our county. He offers a camera, flocks a service that is paid for by monthly, but if we ever want to add a camera that will watch more of forty-one north south and catch the basketball court, put eyes on a little bit more, that, that's, that would be a one-time call. There's no service. Now, it doesn't notify me if somebody comes through in a stolen vehicle, that's something we have to pull up and look and zoom, but it gives me the remote option of being able to do that. In the current state, in, in the climate we're in, if people want different things, we, we, this is an upgrade that the PD needs and I don't, I don't like spending money like this, but I, I would ask you guys to consider it, um.
Now, this is a one-time fee?
This is one-time. This is a, a one-time deal, it's not a, it's not a month, there's not a monthly fee incurred with it like ADP or another company, once the cameras are put in, they link our system and we're able to, we're able to access everything, um. And, and that's the reason this really caught me because, you know, you keep adding monthly fees to everything and then, you know, after a while.
Forty-five hundred dollars?
Count from the way on, that's forty-five hundred dollars is a bill.
As the chairman of the police committee, I recommend that we approve this expenditure and I said, excuse me, and I said move, got airball.
Okay, we got one motion, how about a second?
Second. Having, having looked at the police budget, there's enough room in contingencies alone to cover it.
All in favor? Any against? The others, four are against?
Four.
Four, thank you. So carry it, keep.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else?
How long until installation?
Um, should be like within a week. I, I would think, he told me is, uh, he keeps some of this stuff on hand, he said it's pretty accessible, easy to get to and, you know, just let him know tonight and then he, he said he'd be working on it ASAP. Absolutely, thank you, guys.
Item eight, there will be no executive session tonight. Now, uh, next item up, the parking heads, got anything, Sean?
No, Joe, just some information, uh, we've had some trouble with our water tank down at well three, but it's being worked on, uh, it should be completed by first of next week.
How about the, uh, loan situation for the water stuff?
Okay, I can, I can update you on that. These, I was on the phone with, uh, our representative and EDA has not paid that loan in yet. And they're using the excuse now that, oh, or the reimbursement of money, excuse, I said loan, reimbursement of money. And they're using the excuse that assets were frozen. Which, there was a freeze put on federal assets there for just a little bit, which has thus now been lifted. And, uh, they keep, I was told that turnaround reimbursement will be thirty days. We're probably over six months in now and it still hasn't been put in. And I informed the, uh, grant writer last week when I was talking with her that we're having to pay interest daily on that reimbursement to satisfy that loan. And I'm fixing to go back, if they don't make a move, they don't make it very quickly, I'm fixing to go back to the original agreement. And thirty days turnaround, we, the city, will pay interest on that money. But after then, it's gonna be the state that's gonna pay it, if they don't get off the rear end and send the reimbursement. So that's where we're at right now, we're still waiting. But I am on top of it.
Is that, is that the same, we might be talking about city.
No, you're talking about the EDA project guy here where they dredge the falls. No, you're not, okay.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the Watkins thing. You know, we look at it roughly. They, they were supposed to go to and find out if we needed to up the water bills to.
Okay, we're still gonna have a survey done on the water rates. Uh, Georgia Water's gonna come in and help us with that.
Oh, so the hat came in?
The hat came in yet and we didn't make the January meeting, so we're gonna have to make the May meeting for GFA. That's when that'll take place. But we need to have our water rates figured out and set in and, uh, make sure all is up to date.
Well, we, they just, they just got information last week and they're starting off it. Anything else?
Nothing.
Charlie? Don't have anyone? All right, next, next up, public input, got anything y'all want to say?
We were just curious about the house over here that's about ready to implode. Is anything gonna be done with that or is it just gonna sit there and fall in?
Which house we got, which house we got?
It's up here off of Academy, but I don't know what crossroad it is, but you're in Academy, it's down around the left. And, uh, it's in pretty bad shape.
Who owns it?
I was told the sheriff owned it or something.
Oh, no, that's the property I just purchased.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just waiting on a guy with an excavator.
Oh, okay.
It was programmed.
Huh?
It was programmed.
Here's my neighbor across the street took our picket fence that we took down and he only put up one piece, he didn't put the rest of it up, but he's working on that blue house.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, uh.
You mean, you heard somebody put a fence, they put up one picket?
No, we tore down our picket fence.
Oh, okay.
And it was, I didn't destroy it, but I put it out and the next morning it was gone and he, he got the gentleman owes out. He owned that house and you can see it out in his front yard that he has to put it all.
Set on the wood, come, come get it.
I, I, as a matter of fact, the guy that, so, so, your guys, you guys.
We, at, uh, one sixty up here, the two-story house.
Okay. Yeah, I think, uh, I think the guy that did the, the blue house, he, uh, I let him, they, they got a bunch of wood off of the matched aside because they were built about the same time.
Yeah.
So, but yes, uh, that is the one right across the street from the blue house, if that's the one you're talking about.
Are you gonna rebuild it?
That, no, no, I'm just getting it torn down and it'll just be a lot. Just waiting on somebody to get in there.
Well, I, like I said, we moved up there from Jacksonville, Florida and it's like a breath of fresh air. I mean, it's just unbelievable.
Don't you love driving downtown in Jacksonville?
Oh, gosh, and, and Albany's just as bad as Jacksonville. You know, I mean, every.
I don't know what all that.
I don't know, every morning there's two or three murders or shot, people shot.
Yeah, I know, you don't go in over there without a bulletproof vest.
No. I used to haul medical waste out of the hospital up there and come see me.
Ever criminal in DC?
Not, well, a few times, but.
I'm convinced that every cabin in the nineteen seventies in Washington DC were junior varsity common cause pilots and they got. I'm convinced that every captain who hit the nineteen seventies in Washington DC were junior varsity kamikaze pilots, and they got channeled.
Okay, um, it's good to have you, you, please come back, any way we can help, please let us know.
You guys are great, don't have any problems.
I want to turn back to council here for a minute, uh, we were just handing something, he'll explain what's going on.
Mr. Baker just passed up a, a proposed announcement right then, or a proposed ad, Mr. Baker?
Sir.
Is this a proposed ad?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, two things I want to point out, it looks like a full page is nine hundred, with color, something, something is fifteen hundred, is that right?
No, one thousand.
One thousand, okay, uh, you guys are gonna need to vote on that, if you want to spend that money, but, uh, as written on here, the police department issues citations for things far more than speeding, suspended, suspended registration, no insurance, uh, equipment violations, aggressive driving.
No child seats.
No child seats, all of those citations are included in this ten percent, not just speeding, it's everything.
Right.
So it is a public safety issue, but, uh, Mr. Baker, you guys are gonna have to vote to authorize that.
So move.
Oh, also, uh, Councilman Yawn, this will, uh, is, will be sent out too in the mail, like I was telling you. And, uh, if you'll give me a second, let's vote on this, I'll read you what it got here. All right?
Read it for the vote.
Okay, we got a motion?
Well, let's read it for the vote.
Okay, you wanna read it for the vote, we'll do that, okay.
Yeah, we'll know what I'm voting on.
That's just doing Nancy Bush.
No, we're doing it.
Now, we're running for the, we're running for the price of the ad, we're actually.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a, that's a draft.
We're not waiting for the language of it, I just.
Yeah, this is a draft, this is a draft, it says Sycamore may lose its police department. House Bill one forty will stop the Sycamore Police Department from writing tickets to people on I seventy-five. Tickets are only written at twenty miles per hour over the speed limit. The state will get all the money over ten percent of the budget. Sycamore cannot afford the, uh, Sycamore PD without income from the tickets. Uh, to have a full-time PD, no. What's this, lease fines means taxes will go up, uh, X amount of times. Crime is down in Sycamore, it will go up, uh, without the PD. What can you do? Call the legislature, name, and then you got where you input in the telephone number, tell them House Bill one forty will increase crime, it will increase deaths on the interstate, please vote against this bill, please keep rural Georgia safe. The city of Sycamore.
I would change income from tickets to income from.
There's several edits.
Can, can, no, can I, can I clarify one?
That's a rough draft.
I, I know it is, but I want to clarify something since we're on, if, if I can.
Yeah.
Just one thing, that's going to affect every citation written in the matting, forty-one, thirty-two.
Just about to say that.
Every city ordinance, every city ordinance that we write, you know, nuisance, nuisance ordinance, the animal ordinances, this, this isn't a traffic thing.
Yeah.
This is, uh, everything to us.
I don't, I don't even know why that bill even got.
Right.
Started because when you start cutting because they getting ninety percent, the state getting ninety percent.
Right.
You gonna cut out Allen people, you gonna cut that.
And like I said, I understand that's a draft, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, this, this affects every aspect of what we do.
Exactly.
As well.
Know your, know your share actually thinks that if the state gets us ninety percent, his will increase out there because they're a plan.
We, we, we pay around two hundred, eight thousand dollars every year now.
Yes.
If, 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 if we got, if we don't give the ten percent, we got to pay them ten percent.
Yeah.
What they gonna get then? They gonna get, get nothing, they gonna get nineteen thousand dollars.
They think.
They gonna get nineteen thousand dollars on Sycamore. I, if you wanna give up a half million between Sycamore and Astor, are you?
They think.
But I, I never, I, 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 we, we already know that, I'm gonna vote on yes for a thousand dollars. I make a motion, we can vote yes on the newspaper thing, put it in the newspaper so the people can speak their opinion to them.
Motion's already been made.
I think so.
Okay.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor? Okay.
The editor says he will have some editorial about that.
Huh?
The editor said he will have some editorial.
Yeah.
Well, that was just pay all.
You should tell him, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, item eleven, pay bills.
Move to pay bills.
Got a motion, got a second on the floor, everybody, move. Okay.
Want to go home?
Sir. All in favor, we are adjourned.
James, I'll see the editor tomorrow when I get out. I'll see the editor tomorrow when I get out looking at her.
That letter to you, uh, and you also got an envelope from your mother there.